Okay, thank you. Do I need it?
Yes.
I'm good. Oh, okay. I might need it though. Six of us every day. Already signed. Okay, no worries. Okay, council is seven o'clock. I call this meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the President of Allegro's allegiance? Right, roll call. Ms. Portillo.
All councilors present with the exception of Councilor Gregel. That been declared.
Thank you. Okay, brings us to the next item on the agenda, the agenda approval, Council.
May I move that we approve the agenda as presented? Noting Counselor Gregel's absence.
I second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, citizen comments. This is the portion of the agenda to where we have any citizens who have any comments, you come up to the podium, make your comments, we do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes, if you're still talking at that time, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that moment. Right now, I don't have any cards, so it doesn't appear that we have anyone making any comments today, so we'll go to Zoom. And if you don't mind sharing with the Zoom participants, give them instructions on how they can raise their hand, their hands, so we can recognize them.
You're on Zoom and you'd like to speak for audience comment. You can use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen, or if you are on the telephone, you can dial nine and raise, it'll raise your hand as well.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and close down this segment of the agenda and we'll move to the next item. Under ceremonial items, the first item, we have the introduction of our new community service officer, Wendy Heath.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good to see you all.
Good to see you too, Chief.
So tonight's a good night for us, I'm here to introduce our newest community service officer, Wendy Heath. So Wendy gave me an extremely long bio and I had to break it down to real short because you guys don't want to hear about things from me, and I'm gonna let her talk. But just real quick, Wendy was born in, I'm gonna say it wrong, Derby, England, and moved to Northern Miss- Missouri in nineteen ninety-three with her family. Wendy moved to the San Luis Valley and has lived here in the valley since nineteen ninety-six. Wendy attended TSC for her EMT course, and now we are excited to have her join our family with Alamosa PD and the city of Alamosa. Mike is yours, Wendy, come on up.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity to help serve Alamosa. I will do my best. Do you guys have any questions? I don't.
I'll tell you what, I'll see who would like to make some comments, we'll start off with Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Carson, and then Counselor Hensley.
Well, we're just really glad you're here, Wendy, so thank you for joining our team and we're really excited for the work that you're gonna be doing with, with us in the community, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity again, thank you.
I just wanted to welcome you and we're looking forward to hearing part of the bio. Welcome and good luck, be safe out there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Also, Hensley.
I guess, so Wendy is my neighbor, right? We've known each other for quite some time, and when I heard she got this position, I was super excited, she is gonna do a phenomenal job, and I do think you need to add, I am kind of curious a little about your bio, so if you'll just share a little bit.
Okay, so born and raised in, while I was born in Derby, but raised in a little town called Melbourne, which was actually, I'm gonna say it was a village, but I don't want to glorify it too much, but it was just a small place. Kind of a farming community. Had a pretty close knit family there, and my dad and I did a lot of outdoorsy hunting, fishing, we did falconry, we had all kinds of little things going on, so I can say that my childhood was really good. We moved here in, let's see, ninety-three to Missouri. There, the reason that we came there was farming, ranching, my parents farmed and wrenched out there, we was there till ninety-six, the reason we came out here was because Missouri was so humid, and here is really dry, really, really dry right now. So that's what actually got me here into Colorado, and I've been here ever since, I did leave for a short while to Phoenix and Sedona. I loved Arizona, but Colorado was still home, so I came back and had this opportunity with the city and with the police department, and I'm really grateful. So there's a lot of gratitude, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Wendy, and welcome to our village, we're looking forward to having you with us.
I like that, thank you so much, thank you.
Alright, that's it, thank you. Okay, that brings us down to proclamations, we have two of them tonight, and as a team here on council, instead of just having one person read the proclamation, we, we share in reading proclamations, and tonight, I have two council members who are helping us out, Counselor V Hill and Counselor Daniel. The first proclamation is the Crime Victims' Rights Week proclamation, and if we can have you all come up to the podium, prior to Counselor V Hill read his proclamation, and then we'll follow up with Counselor Daniel afterwards. Go ahead. Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being here tonight. Crime Victims' Week, whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has legal standing and protections that go along with it, whereas crime victims' rights acts passed here in Colorado and at the federal level guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate and use their voice in the criminal justice process. Whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied professionals can help survivors find their justice by enforcing these rights. Whereas the right to provide an impact statement ensures that victims' voices are considered in court during the sentencing and, when applicable, restitution processes. Whereas including and elevating the voices of survivors makes certain they are heard and seen and creates a path to forging and sustaining community trust. Whereas engaging survivors creates responses and services that are credible, meaningful, and centered on individual needs. Whereas survivors' lived experience can serve as a catalyst for implementing innovative programs, shifting existing programs in new directions, and changing policies or practices that prevent survivors from accessing services or pursuing justice. Whereas National Crimes Victims' Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to listening to crime survivors in every space where decisions are made that could impact them. And whereas the city of Alamosa is hereby dedicated to amplifying the voices of survivors and creating an environment where survivors have the confidence that they will be heard, believed, and supported. Now, therefore, the mayor and the City Council of Alamosa do hereby proclaim that the week of April twenty-ninth, twenty-third through twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, as Crime Victims' Rights Week reaffirming the city of Alamosa's commitment to
The theme shows perfectly what the victims and survivors of the San Luis Valley were able to accomplish in twenty-twenty-two.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Williams and I'm the Board President of Ribbons for Courage, or Ribbons of Courage, sorry. Any person who is a victim of a criminal act shall have the right to be heard when relevant, informed, and present at all critical stages of the criminal justice process. These are the words of Section sixteen A of the Bill of Rights in the Colorado Constitution as passed on March third, nineteen ninety-two. Thirty-three states have passed similar constitutional amendments preserving the rights of victims of crime. Since nineteen seventy-four, when Congress passed the Child Abuse Prevention and Treatment Act, the United States and individual states have taken great steps to ensure that victims are not forgotten and lost in the criminal process. From the Victims of Crime Act of nineteen eighty-four to the Violence Against Women Act of nineteen ninety-four, and the Justice for All Act of two thousand and four, we continue to move toward a better approach for the justice system to ensure justice is carried out. Just last year, the Colorado General Assembly passed essential updates to the Victims Victim Rights Act to ensure all victims of crimes are protected by law enforcement agencies, prosecutors, and judges.
In twenty-twenty-one, victims and survivors of the San Luis Valley took their own stand for crime victims' rights. Through their elevated voices and community support, they were able to fight for effective change. Their voices were not only heard throughout the San Luis Valley, but in many other cities throughout the nation. On behalf of Ribbons of Courage, I would like to thank the city of Alamosa for your part in the elevation of survivor voices in two thousand and twenty-two, and for showing your continued support to crime victims' rights. Thank you.
Thank you, and we're gonna come down and present you with this proclamation, DA Kelly, were you gonna say a few words, we didn't want to cut you off?
She's, she is a part of our board.
Okay. Next proclamation is May Mental Health Month proclamation, I believe Ms. Kate Jack is here for that one, you can come up to the podium, thank you. Then we'll have Counselor Daniel read that proclamation.
Mary, thank you, it is my privilege to read this proclamation. This proclamation declares May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Alamosa. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health, and whereas mental illnesses affect almost every family in America, and whereas people with mental illnesses recover, if given the necessary services and supports in their communities, and whereas people with mental illnesses make important contributions to our families and our communities, and whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illnesses every year, and whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness, and whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help, and whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with a mental illness, and whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses, and whereas greater public awareness about mental illnesses can change negative attitudes and behaviors, behaviors toward people with mental illnesses. Therefore, we, the City Council of Alamosa, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty-twenty-three as Mental Health Month. As the City Council of Alamosa, we also call upon all Alamosa citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to, I can't see it, I'm so sorry. There's a, there's a, there's a stamp on it. To recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Ms. Jack, did you, like, would you like to make some comments?
I just want to thank the city of Alamosa for partnering with us, I'm Kate Jack, Director of Communications at San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group, and I was grateful to reach out to Christina Daniel and with Valleywide and SLB Health and worked together to make this proclamation happen. I've been happy to work with Heather Brooks on numerous grants related to mental health and addressing those needs here in our community and the greater valley in general, and I just appreciate your guys' time today and your partnership.
Okay, thank you, we're gonna come down and present that to you. Thank you, Counselor Daniel. That's all good? Okay, the next.
Twenty-twenty-three numbers are up twenty-five percent from where they were last year in March twenty-twenty-two, and we are continuing to talk with other cities' food pantries inside and outside of rural areas and other cities with soup kitchens to, who are also seeing increased deeds, so that we can accurately estimate that need and allocate funding accordingly. To that end, we are struggling with the rising cost of inflation, our donation to Food Bank doesn't go quite as far as it used to, and to help address that, we are working with the state of Colorado to provide additional resources. We've recently received two grants focused on food purchasing, one targeted specifically at partnering with local producers, including a lot of SLB-based ranchers, as well as the Rio Grande Farm Park to provide locally sourced and healthier food to our residents. We are also partnering with the state for the Emergency Food Bank Funding Program, which they released in response to the cessation of federal SNAP benefits, we were one of two recipients for that funding. Outside of that, we're just gonna monitor the increased service numbers and see if that trend continues to rise, or see if we're just looking at a roughly twenty-five percent rate, and as we enter the next fiscal year in July, we'll have a better sense of that and a better sense of how we need to fix our budget for it. Outside of service numbers, we're moving forward on the acquisition of Atencios, will be closing in about three weeks, and we are still on track for our scheduled opening date in December of this year. I don't have any further updates, but I would like to invite everyone on the council and everyone in attendance to attend generosity on tap on April twenty-ninth, Food Bank's annual fundraiser, to the Colorado Farm Brewery, it's a wonderful time, and Mayor Coleman has graciously agreed to be our guest auctioneer for the live auction portion.
That's right, thank you, fifty-five, fifty-six, alright.
We're all very excited.
Okay, Wilson, I'm gonna see if anyone has any comments for you, okay? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So Wilson, thank you, thank you for the presentation and all the work that you and the team does, and Annalise, I know she's been working really hard on everything, so that is wonderful. When you, so do you know how many families have children in those numbers at all?
I could pull that, I don't have it in front of me, I can send that over.
But I did think that that was something that you kept, because I do think that's an important statistic for people as well, just to hear in our community about the, the way this is impacting others, and I'm really appreciative that you all got funding for the, like, as the SNAP benefits changed, and I know you did a lot of work with our community members as those changes were happening, and with the Department of Human Services, so thank you for all of that work as well, this is great, thanks for the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Crips?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for being here tonight, thank you for the data, it is appreciated, and I think it's, it's eye-opening for some people to hear it. What I've always appreciated about the Food Bank is you not only recognize that it's a community issue, that you invite the community to participate in the solution of that, so I also want to thank you for the, the opportunities to help hack boxes for Thanksgiving and things of that nature, so. Sorry to miss Annalise, but as your team, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Counselor Crips, and I'll go ahead and close things out, looks like I don't see any other mics lit. Thank you, Wilson, for the presentation, and thank you for all the work that you all do, helping serve the people in our community who need the services that you provide, so keep up the great work.
Absolutely, thank you for having me.
You're welcome, and I'll see you at that event. Alright, good deal. That brings us to the next item on the, on the agenda. Business brought forward by city staff. Development Services Resolution Number eight dash twenty-twenty-three, approving the Tierra Azul Preliminary Development Plan.
Okay. Thank you, it's certainly our pleasure to introduce this resolution, and I know you folks might be excited to get to a certain sporting event starting at eight, so we'll move it along pretty quick. We do have a very short presentation, though, just to kind of recap where we're at in this process.
Sorry, we're having technical difficulties, just a minute.
Um, while she's getting that queued up, I certainly would like to point out that we have the applicant and applicant's representative, they drove here from Denver, and right after this, they're turning around and driving right back, but I think it's a good demonstration of the commitment to this project that we've all been experiencing for quite a while now. Go ahead, thank you. Okay, so just to recap, what is a PUD, a Planned Unit Development, it's a two-step process, this is the first step, so this is a conceptual approval, it's kind of like a zoning and a variance combined in a way, certain design flexibilities are granted, code amendments are granted for a certain period of time with the idea that you have a nice cohesive development, and there's some sort of surety and longevity through the, the lifetime of the project. The reason we're doing this PUD is really it's an effective and efficient way to handle a development of this size in order to really achieve the diversity and, and density of housing that we're really trying to achieve with this development, this was the perfect tool in our tool belt to do that. So just really briefly, as a project concept, this is about forty-three acres right off of South Craft Drive and the projection of West Eighth Street, this was annexed a year ago, almost a year ago. We've been working on this for a very long time, our first meeting with CRC was actually in February of twenty-twenty, so here we are over three years later, and we've been working weekly since October of twenty-twenty-one, so tons and tons of time spent, we've gone through at least fifty renditions of different layouts to find really the thing that would meet the communities' need the best. Obviously, the reason why we're doing this is because of housing. One of the really wonderful things about this project is it hits the, you know, the huge part of our target that we're really trying to achieve, our housing needs assessment shows a shortfall of housing units, up to five hundred and fifteen through twenty-twenty-six, so this certainly helps us get a long ways, and this is a long-term investment in our community and its stability and housing. I certainly just want to point out really quick, so most of the housing will be here between thirty AMI and then a hundred and forty AMI, so it really covers a huge spectrum, and to kind of put that into perspective for what that means in our community, these are really kind of the, these are the people that, you know, that fit into that, that rainbow design, so everything from retail associates, police officers, you know, couples who are a police officer and a nurse, or a teacher, and somebody who works in retail, so these are really important people in our community, super important for our economics, and obviously the people that we have as neighbors and friends and family. As I said before, this is, this project is right off of South Craft Drive, it's about forty-three acres, again, this is kind of a conceptual approval, this sets the ground rules, the next phase will be a preliminary, or excuse me, a final development plan for all or part of Phase, or I guess it's Planning Area One, they're on the rights between Foster and South Craft, so we should be seeing that application fairly soon, that's really the nitty-gritty layouts, plats, so on and so forth. And just because pictures are worth a thousand words, this is how the project is imagined to be staged over the next twenty-five years, so we expect Phase One and Two to be built out within the next nine years, frankly, it'll probably happen faster than that, so we'll kind of keep that in our, our, our certain ideas here. One thing that was changed in our resolution from when it was submitted last week to most recently is we more clarified these timelines and related it to the project, so that there's clear and predictable benchmarks, and there's not really ambiguity, so that was something I think that gives everybody a lot of relief. So again, this is kind of a conceptual of what it's gonna look like, what you see are, you know, lots of different types of housing, zero-scape design, and really, this is a community, it's a neighborhood that's being built, not just really, you know, housing development, and I think we've got one more picture, so yeah, I would want to live here, frankly, so, and I certainly expect many of our community members, staff, they'll be living here too. So one of the things that I, I harp on quite a bit on a project of this magnitude is you need three things to coalesce, so you need the community, community need, which is certainly demonstrated in our housing needs assessment, you need financial means, so can you build this, and really, this project was designed to be as efficient as possible with the use of infrastructure, with housing development density, certainly with thoughtful amenities, and, you know, amazing design work, you know, all the, the small details that helps get people into housing. And then the final is the political will. So really, that's where we're at tonight, is, you know, having council put their political will behind really a monumentous project. So with that, staff wholeheartedly recommends the approval of Resolution Eight Twenty Twenty Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Deacon, for that very good thorough presentation. I'll see if any.
Counselor Veho. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Deacon and Rachel, thank you for your presentation and the work session we had a week ago, I guess it was now. This project is awesome, and I, I, some things that I really like is the zero escaping effect on there and saving water, because we all know where that's going. But when this goes through, what are some things that, that we can do, or the developers can do, or we can work together on communicating wha- wha- what this housing is going to, like, you said, the thirty to one-twenty AMI, and how it's not, it's not going to be a piece of junk housing unit off, off on the south side? How do we, how do we communicate that it's, it's not going to be that?
I think a lot of it comes through persistence of, and key messaging, just, you know, reminding folks that affordable does not equal low income. And just because someone has a, an AMI of thirty percent, oh, really, that's just a number. There's still a human being, and they still have a place to live, and they might have kids who go to school with, you know, your kids and things like that. I think putting the human element on it in the educational aspect is super important.
One of the goals of the housing plan is actually to do a robust housing education campaign. And so that takes a lot of different forms. So the initial pages, some of the, the images that break down what the different AMIs mean in terms of salary and in terms of what type of careers those people have, that'll all be on the website. It's a really, it's part of the new website launch, but all the pages are done, and they're really beautiful, and a lot of really creative infographic ways of explaining housing education. But it has to be a community effort. So I mean, we're going to have to do multi-pronged approaches. And I think that we all, just as community members, because we know what affordable housing means, and because the terminology is so important, is it just needs to be an ongoing comp- uh, conversation that we have across the board. But the housing resources on the website really are beautiful and really are comprehensive, and that's going to be kind of the first push. And then I, I think whether it's mailers, or whether it's, you know, some of the fun things they're starting to do with social media through the PIO's office and the City Manager's Office, I think there's a lot of ways to get that message out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Veho. Counselor Daniel?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Our, our work session was amazing, so I don't have any questions about this. I just want to say thank you. I think this looks beautiful. I'm really excited to see the developers here and to talk this through. I think this is going to be great for our community and really appreciate the thoughtful planning and the idea of community that has come out with the different types of housing and things like that. I think that is also important for our community here, that it's not going to be the same-looking houses the whole, whole way around. And I think that's really important.
Hey, Counselor Hensley.
I, I did, I did what everybody else has said. The amount of work and effort and how beautiful this community is going to be, and that it'll be a community all of in its own, something that I know people will actually really be like looking forward to living there. So that's awesome. I also want to thank the planners for coming. I know you took time out to obviously get here and come back. And it, but it just shows that true dedication, that partnership, that real, that purpose in the sense of helping other, helping those in our community, and that partnership and togetherness to make things happen.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Carson?
I was gonna make a motion that we approve Resolution Eight Dash Twenty Twenty Three. We're all pretty up to speed on it. Thank you, guys, for being here. It is a huge addition to our community. And, you know, sometimes you can't get around stigmas if people can't see the beauty and the design and the thoughtfulness in it and know that it's going to be a wonderful place to live, you know? I don't know what kind of messages I'm gonna get through on, but I make a motion that we approve Resolution, or we adopt Resolution Eight Dash Twenty Twenty Three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will be abstaining from this vote, being that I do work with CRHDC.
I had a question, Mayor. Does this have to go to a, a, a second reading or type, any type of hearing?
No.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number Five Dash Twenty Twenty Three.
Thank you. So as we had our last meeting two weeks ago, we had a very full discussion, and so we won't belabor the point. I really do want to point out, we've had community members who served on our redistricting committee at every one of these meetings, whether it's the work session. So I certainly want to give a special thanks to Art Ortiz and Andy Adams, who are in the audience tonight. They've been there every time, so it's really, really awesome. So you folks certainly delegated a big task, and they're very, they've really stepped up to the challenge. So with that, staff recommends that C- City Council open up for public hearing, and unless there's evidence to the contrary, adopt the committee map as proposed.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public reading for the second reading of ordinance number Five Dash Twenty Twenty Three, and ordinance amending the election districts into revised wards and approving an updated ward map of the city of Alamosa. So if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time, please come up to the podium and do so. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience coming up to the podium. So now we're turning it over to our Zoom participants to give them an opportunity to raise your hand. If you're on Zoom, Ms. Potel, would you give them instructions?
If you're on Zoometh and you'd like to speak for our, for the ordinance for this public hearing, you can use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments. Leave Counselor Veho.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And I know, I know I've said a lot two weeks ago, and I'm gonna keep saying some things tonight, is thinking back to what was said two weeks ago, Deacon, you said that staff had an aha moment after seeing the creation of this map. And your aha moment was the fact that there's a possibility that all seven people on City Council could be north of the tracks. I'm wondering if that aha moment was communicated back to the people who came up with this, the, the group that put this together.
No, we didn't have another meeting since, since we came up with that map.
So if, in my opinion, I feel like that's a pretty big deal, and I feel like that should be communicated back to the group to see if they're okay with it. I don't, I, and again, I said this two weeks ago, I appreciate all the hard work that this group put in to making this map. I just feel like I'm, I'm really trying to protect, protect the community of interest that is Ward Three and Ward Four. And it does, doesn't scare me, but what I say, it's, I don't, it doesn't sit well with me that there, that, that could happen. There could be seven people on the north, north side of the tracks who represent Ward Three or Ward Four. And I would ask council to maybe unpack that a little bit, and, and those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Veho. Counselor Carson?
I've already done all the unpacking I need, and so whenever you guys are ready, I'm ready to make a motion.
Counselor Crips?
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
I cannot commend your committee for all the hard work it put in. And I took your comments to heart, Counselor Veho, and molded over. And in, and this is coming from me. This is my opinion. I recognize your concerns, but I think as a council, we shouldn't regulate other people's choices of what ward they want to, if they choose to run for that ward. If they step up and they want to represent a certain ward, it shouldn't matter where in the ward they live. And if the people voting in that ward disagree with that, then they have the opportunity to vote against that person. And I, I'm not comfortable trying to sit up here and regulate a decision on that level. I feel the map is strong where it is. They put a lot of work into it. And if that becomes an issue down the road, then in ten years, we have a chance to right those wrongs. But we need to give those folks a chance. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Crips? Thank you. Counselor Carson?
I will make a motion that we adopt ordinance Five Dash Twenty Twenty Three as presented and adopt the committee proposed map.
Oh, second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting.
Yeah, I have discussion. I have discussion. So no one up here on council wants to entertain that aha moment that staff had? Hold on, that staff had and doesn't want to commu- communicate that back to the board that put this together?
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
So Counselor Veho, I believe that we have talked about this, and yes, the staff had a different, like, this thing that said, yep, this could happen, and their recommendation is still this map. Still this map that came from this committee, still this work that they had done. And I think it is up to us and the folks that run and get elected to make sure that they represent their wards. As we've talked about before, it is really important that whether or not you are an at-large counselor, whether or not you're a ward counselor, that you work to represent those communities of interest, and you get out and talk to people and do the things that you need to do. And I think that is reasonable within this map with the numbers that are required. And I think delaying this will put us past a timeline, I believe. And I think this is the one that staff has recommended, and I think we, it, it puts us in a good, in a good place.
So I, I, I respect your thoughts. I don't think staff recommended this map.
So, so, yeah, so I, I, I want to try to clear this up, because Deacon, so what we discussed for the first reading is we wanted you guys to have a discussion and, and pick a map. And our, our recommendation was one of those three options type of thing. During the presentation, we, I think Deacon shared, you know, if you were to ask us, we probably do lean towards the one that Counselor Veho has presented, simply because of that aha moment of that there is a chance that could happen. That doesn't mean it's bad. That doesn't mean that it should be the only consideration, but if you were to ask staff, that was it. Once you guys voted for that, for the one from the district, then in order to meet the timeline, our recommendation is to approve this on second reading. So I do not want to prolong the debate, but I do think out of, just to make sure for everyone that we are clear, because I, I don't want Counselor Veho to feel like, where'd you guys go? You told me you preferred this map. But once you guys made your first vote, if you're gonna make the deadline, we, it's too big of a change to adopt that one. We would miss the deadline type of situation. That's not the end of the world, and I'll let the city attorney say what he wants to say.
Well, no, you could adopt that one. It would be too big of a change to radically depart from any of the three options that were presented at first reading, but you could adopt any of the three that were presented at first reading. You, so the deadline is it has to be six months prior to the, the election for which it's going to be used. And the election for which it's going to be used is to be held on November sixth or something. And you've got ten days between when you adopt it and when it becomes effective. So you would have to, if you don't adopt one at this meeting, you would, if you were gonna make it effective for this next election, you would have to hold a special meeting to get it done.
Can I just add to mine? I just want to say thank you to Heather for the clarification. I appreciate that, and thank you, Counselor Veho.
Counselor Carson, then Counselor Hensley.
First of all, I want to thank Counselor Krebs. You articulated it way more beautifully than I would have. I appreciate your comments, because that's exactly my feeling. Secondly, to your point, we've had a member of that committee at every meeting. You stated that clearly. Have you been approached by any members of the committee since your aha moment?
No. I would say after our first work session, which was before we presented this specific option, we did have quite a few who came to us, you know, individually, who felt still very passionately about their map.
Thank you. Mayor, I've already made a motion.
Sure, we, we're still in a little discussion, because Counselor Hensley, no worries. Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say, because I actually probably was on board in the sense with you, Counselor Veho, in the sense there were things I really liked about, was it Math Three? I, I mix up the numbers. But anyway, the one that we're discussing here, I also do really value and respect what the committee put together. And it, for me, it was one of those things, when I looked at them, there were things I saw on all of them that I liked. There was probably some, something where on the third one, well, there wasn't probably, there was something on the third one. I liked, I thought the lines were cleaner, in the sense I thought it was easier to really see it. I liked sort of the creative approach of how it was broken down. But at the same time, so at that point, I was supportive of it, and I still do really like it. But I, I, it's not to the point where I'm going. I'm also really good with the others, and I also really value what everybody put into it. And it's one of the, one of those things, I'm not necessarily heartbroken, i- either way. Does that make sense? So I just wanted to, I guess, air that and say my thoughts on that.
I would, really quick, just like to point out that the condition that these, that you could hypothetically have representation north of those tracks has been true, at least for the, since the last ward was, ward map was adopted, I think the one before that, which is the more previous one that, that I am aware of from adopted in two thousand. So it's not necessarily a new condition. I think this is just the first time that we've actually noticed it.
Okay, council. We have a motion. We have a second. No further discussion. Please start voting.
The motion carried five to one.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, presentation from, on the city's effort related to homelessness. Ms. Brooks?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Ariel's gonna pull up the presentation. As we shared with council, the chamber invited me to, to be a speaker at their lunch at the previous month. And the presentation was to focus entirely on what the city of Alamosa's efforts are regarding homelessness. So I know as a council perspective, you've been every step of the way with us on this. But I think it, seeing it all in one place, and then having another opportunity for the public to see this, either through Zoom, or for those in the, the audiences, is positive. I also, when I started this with the chamber, I made it clear that, that the efforts towards homelessness in our community obviously extends much more beyond just what the city of Alamosa is doing. So this is not a summary of what La Puente or other community partners are doing as it relates to homelessness. Ariel? The first part is when we start talking about homelessness is trying to take a look at an honest understanding of the causes of what can cause homelessness. I have the first bullet being the lack of affordable housing. I think there's a lot of studies that are coming out that when you look at different demographics and income and crime and drugs and mental health, that yes, there are some overlays, but one of the biggest determinants for communities on their rates of homelessness is a connection to affordable housing. And so that's why I do have that as the first bullet. Sometimes it can be from trauma, exiting an abusive situation. We've got a lot of individuals living paycheck to paycheck, and if there's a disruption, that can be a big enough disruption that can create homelessness. If you have a disruption in, in employment, a health issue, medical death, death, death in a fa- of a family member, disability, involvement in the criminal justice system. But I also have a pair of bullet that's choice, because there is a part of the population that this might be a choice. Now, some of them may also have an addiction or a mental health, and you may wonder how much of a choice is that? But when we're trying to have an honest conversation, it's, it's important to make sure that we're including all of that. And obviously, a lot of these could be co-occurring. Ariel? The other piece of information I wanted to offer, to just kind of get at some of the perceptions individuals may have, is the information from the most recent point in time count. It was held on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. The point in time count, and so anyone who's ever involved will tell you, this doesn't get to every homeless individual. This is not an- This is not an accurate count, but it's the count that the federal government uses. It's what you have to use for grants, all of those types of things. I think the things that jump out is a lot of individuals in the valley may think Alamosa is the only one with a homeless population, and so you can see with that table, we are not, and in fact, we do not even have the most for this count. So again, these are not the full numbers. But it also gives us an idea of how many are in the valley for this count, which is three hundred and nineteen. But it also gives you a feel of some of the other categories. So there's forty-four of those individuals who are veterans. It gives you an idea of the male, female split, Hispanic, non-Hispanic. But it also gives you an idea for the Alamosa subsets, you know, three of the individuals were fleeing domestic violence, eight reporting a serious mental illness, ten with a substance use disorder, eight with PTSD, two brain injuries, twenty-two with a chronic physical illness or disability. So it does give you a little bit of an idea of the demographics that we have for unsheltered homeless. Next. The other thing I, I like to start it in the beginning is council has really been trying to do this balancing act, and they're doing this in a legal landscape. And I think a lot of times people try to not realize how complicated of an issue homelessness is. And there's a lot of things the city can and cannot do. We cannot stop people from coming to Alamosa. That's housed or unhoused. If someone wants to come to Alamosa, I, I can't build a wall. I can't send them away either. And so we legally cannot force people to leave Alamosa regardless if they're from here or not. If they're creating crimes or not, I can't force them to leave. The other thing, though, is splitting it even thinner is we actually can't stop most of the loitering people see on public property. There's some limitations related to sexually violent predators, or they can't be in the middle of the street where it's creating a hazard. But when you see individuals on the sidewalks or in the, on the corners or in the parks, we cannot stop loitering type of situation, and I understand it's frustrating and some instances creates a nuisance, but there's legal limitations on what the city can do. Now, private property owners can trespass individuals. That's not necessarily something that solves it. But it, it does allow the police to move them on. It doesn't mean they don't come back. Prior to Saint Benedict, and I think this is the key that a lot in our community myths, is we could not stop people from camping in parks and alleys, along the trails, anywhere else on public property if we did not have Saint Benedict. With the recent court cases, and they're becoming less recent, but if there is not a location for individuals to go, then you cannot enforce your no camping ordinances. And so that is one of the key drivers to why council considered the creation of Saint Benedict. I sent an article from the, from a newspaper today, and it, it, it goes to show that it wasn't just the city attorney crying wolf. Like, the article's interviewing the ACLU, talking about a potential lawsuit against another city who's enforcing no camping when there's no place for their unsheltered homeless to go. So it's very real situation. The other last bullet, this is as frustrating for those who work with homeless individuals and providers as it is for the community in that you can't force people into treatment. So even though I might be able to look at someone and say, I feel like you need some help, either with a substance use disorder or mental health disorder, you cannot force people to access that help if they don't want to, and it's heartbreaking. And it does make it harder to try to get at, at the healing. Next. The homeless coalition is probably the first big step that the city took in entering the homeless discussion. Prior to this, a lot of what we would say if someone said, hey, there's a homeless person over here, there's issues going on here, we'd say, talk to La Puente. But I think the, in twenty nineteen, actually twenty eighteen, we started having discussions of we need to change this from just a La Puente issue to more of this is a community issue, and our community needs to talk about what response do we want to homelessness? Because how Seattle responds to homelessness versus Colorado Springs versus a different community may look different based on what that community wants. And so we felt that this needed to be a community response and a community discussion. So council created the coalition. You added representatives representing all those different areas. And the group has been working on identifying existing services and gaps. And the major gaps that we have found is not a surprise. Housing, case management, consistency in mental health and substance use treatment, and that's not necessarily just from a provider perspective. It's when you're unhoused, knowing what day it is and remembering you have an appointment can be challenging when you're trying to access some of these services. Securing proper IDs and then opening a bank account. The group is now beginning to work on a public education campaign. The next step was the creation of the Saint Benedict campsite. We lived through this together, so I won't spend an enormous amount of time. But we, during COVID, everything was shut down. The shelter was shut down. The bus stops, the bus stand was all shut down. All the public restrooms were shut down. A lot of businesses were shut down. And all of a sudden, we had an unhoused population in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, health pandemic, that had no access to toilets or running water or anything like that. And so we scrambled with the county and other partners to try to identify a location where we could provide those services. Our first location received a lot of public input, which, or pushback, which was near the cemetery. Some of that was because of the limited amount of housing that was there. But then a lot of the pushback was about the issues we had been hearing for a long time, which is some of that nuisance behavior of what is happening with loitering and, and certain things like that and camping in areas they shouldn't camp. So that is when we pivoted. And in addition to meeting the short-term need for COVID, we founded a long, a location that served for the permanent location for a campsite as well. And so we do have fencing out there. The porta-johns are out there. We pay approximately thirty-six hundred a year. There's one location for potable water, trash dumpsters, Wi-Fi, security cameras. I didn't put a cost for Wi-Fi and security cameras because we got grants to put them up, and it's just into our system. So there's not any kind of ongoing cost related to that. There is one location with a USB outlet. That's electrical cost then of about eighteen hundred a year. The reason we do get asked, why do you have Wi-Fi? Why do you have electricity out there? Well, initially, from a COVID perspective, it was important for individuals to be able to access whatever, whatever health guidelines were coming out, to be able to access doctors, any telehealth, those types of situations during that. But the reason to keep it is it's very minimal cost. And if I can't stop loitering in other parts of the community, if I can try to use a carrot and keep the loitering limited here because you can access electricity and Wi-Fi here, then that's maybe something we can do to try to help address the loitering. We do have thirteen huts out there. We started with fifteen. Two have burned down. We are not replacing the huts. We've made those clear to all community partners and the residents of Saint Benedict. And they were funded with a grant. And then obviously, we do have monthly volunteer cleanups. We had three options. We had the option of not doing anything related to cleanups, and we would see a lot of accumulation of trash and nuisances, public health issues potentially, fire danger issues, those types of things, but you could do nothing. We could pay people to go in there and clean up, a contractor or something like that. Or we could simply organize a monthly volunteer cleanup and not have to pay anybody and yet prevent the nuisance from, from getting out of control. We do have rules out there, although I have to be clear that since the purpose of this campsite is so we can enforce our no camping, the rules are slightly a little looser than maybe what some people may want. So yes, we do say you need to keep your area clean. But what is that standard of clean versus if you're going to trespass someone for breaking the rule and say you can't camp anywhere in the town, we better be able to meet a reasonable legal standard there type of thing? So we are raising the bar, though, because we think that bar needs to be raised by looking at some of the accumulation of junk. But it's never going to be as pristine as what some individuals may expect in a, a regular residential area. We have trespassed a few when they've presented a danger to other individuals in the campsite. Next. I'm going to quickly, these are just pictures, I think, I think from a public perception perspective, I don't know what people envision out there. Some individuals think maybe this is an attraction. I don't find this attractive. I, I think some individuals think there's piles of needles. There's not piles of needles. For the times I've been out there, yes, I have found some needles, which is why we have the, the discussion of how to handle them. I would say for the times I've been out there, it's probably been five needles, maybe four, maybe six, but around five. There's areas that are more prone to potentially have them than other areas. But these pictures show the porta-johns. They show, show the one area for the, the water, the trash dumpsters. You can see the, the electrical area where they put some seating there. Ariel, if you want to go to the next one. And then this is just looking down the two roads. You can see some of the huts. You can see that there is some trash. I'll say that these pictures were taken after two months of no, two or three months of no volunteer pickups. So yes, there's trash, but considering it's been three months of no volunteer pickups, it's, it, it could have been much worse type of situation. So I think the big thing is there's not tons of trees. It's not fancy. There's not water and electricity going to every location. This is not an attraction. And in fact, if you talk to a lot of individuals who are out here, they would rather have their own little spot near the river where they feel more secluded, and I think it's important to understand that. Next. When we collect information on who's using the huts, I think this is also illustrative as well. One of the questions we ask is how long have they been in the valley? And so that, that ranges from everything of five who were born and raised here down to the lowest one who was only here for three years. And again, this is only those using the huts. This is not other unsheltered homeless because there are other unsheltered homeless who are not from the valley. This also tells us, though, we wanted to prioritize those who might be escaping domestic violence. We wanted to prioritize those who happen to be families. If there's a disability, anything like that. So we also had eight who are escaping domestic violence and twelve who have a chronic health condition. The other miscellaneous city efforts is we do contribute two thousand towards crisis prevention. It's a lot easier to keep people out of homelessness than trying to get them back into a home. We contribute five thousand towards the food bank. You heard the update on that tonight. Seven thousand towards eviction mitigation services. Ten thousand towards a work readiness. That's until twenty twenty-six. We do purchase bus tickets. So in twenty twenty-two, we actually purchased twenty-two tickets. I'm hoping twenty twenty-three, we purchase twenty-three because it's an easy number to remember. So we can do that. That, for twenty twenty-three, we have about three thousand budgeted to purchase bus tickets. We do do lead, and we added the co-responder programs. While that's not focused on homelessness, there is overlap there. We added our third community service officer. We are going to be rolling out a park adoption program. And then we are also participating in the SLV opioid regional council. There is no way to talk about homelessness without talking about housing. And so I do have a few slides to try to really help underst, help the community understand how important housing is. Our twenty twenty-one housing assessment and housing plan identified a crisis, and that's the language we're using from here on out because it is a crisis. We are behind by two hundred and sixty-eight units right now. Right now, we are two hundred and sixty-eight units behind. It's estimated by twenty sixteen, we'll be behind by five hundred and fourteen. Our median income is thirty-eight thousand compared to the median income of eighty-two thousand for Colorado. Seven hundred is what the target rent should be for Alamosa in twenty twenty-one. It was actually eight hundred and seventy-nine. The household target, the house price for median income should have been a hundred and sixty to two hundred and seventy-five, when in actuality in twenty twenty-one, it was three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. This is an issue for individuals looking for housing, for a workforce looking for housing, and then it pushes everything further down. Thirty percent is the maximum amount that anyone at any income should spend before it becomes, or for it to be considered affordable. So anything more than that, it's a burden. What our study found is fifty percent of our Alamosa renters are paying more than that. They are cost burdened. They are paying more than thirty percent of their income. AMI gets thrown around a lot. I had to be educated just enough to be able to do this presentation. But we do have staff in case there's questions. But trying to explain what AMI is and, and what affordable is, because I think a lot of people have a perception of what, that affordable is just low income and what that, that happens to mean. So if we look at a four-person and we look at a hundred percent AMI, so that is the average median income, that's seventy-three thousand five hundred. That means a four-person household making anything less than seventy-three thousand five hundred qualifies for affordable housing at these different levels. So I think that slide is important to try to help people understand what AMI and affordable housing is. Next slide, please. You saw this slide already, but it's one that we're probably using a lot in that we need to add a picture of who, what positions, what workforce are we talking about that qualify for affordable housing? My joke that I made to the chamber is you can see, you know, clearly, the retail associate needs to get with the teacher to be able to afford, you know, a hundred percent AMI. There's, there's benefits to connecting with different professionals. But this helps give an idea, when you look at the different housing that's being built and what's being targeted, it is between this thirty, forty percent up to about the hundred and fifty. And these are our workforce. These are key people of our communities type of thing. I know Iron Horse has, has received, you know, a lot of situations. But again, Iron Horse is affordable housing, which means it is geared between thirty to sixty percent. It is geared for our retail associates, police officers, other professionals at that level. Now, how things are being managed can be a completely different story, but affordable housing on its face isn't supposed to be any type of group of people. It's about professionals in our community being able to pay thirty percent or less of their income. Next slide. So right now, our greatest gap is, it's almost up to just three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand. And so it's the full spectrum as individuals are trying to enter it. And as those at the higher end of the spectrum can't find their housing needs, they start moving down, which then takes up the supply from those who can afford that. It starts moving down. There's a cascading effect. So the next slide. I'm so glad that we have CRHDC here because the last slide is though we, there is a light at the end of the housing tunnel. CRHDC has a four hundred-plus unit development in design and going through the approval process. We also have SLV Housing Coalition that's working with the Boyd School Project and Saving Century Mobile Home Park. SLV Health has worked to make some connection from a workforce housing perspective. And there's also some smaller private developments that are going on. So there is a light at the end of the tunnel. We just need to try to do everything we can to help fast forward these developments. And with that, I'm open to any questions. Oh, wait, no, I'm not done. Let's keep going. Sorry about the nuggets. So the other big projects that the city is working on is moving the soup kitchen and also making that as an emergency warming shelter. So right now, we have a soup kitchen that's sort of in the middle of a residential area. It's about one point four miles away from our unsheltered homeless location, which is Saint Benedict. That's about a thirty-five minute walk type of situation. The soup kitchen is kind of like a commercial activity. You have individuals coming, and then you have them leaving after the meal. And some of that is what is creating the pressure and the pushback from a community neighborhood perspective. So if we can put that in a better location that is more attuned for commercial activity and is next to those who are the most vulnerable, which are the unhoused, it is a very positive situation. We also have it within walking distance of social services, behavioral health. We also have crossroads and some of our other services that are there. And so we are looking at trying and partnering with La Puente to move that soup kitchen. And it also is then an opportunity to create something that we didn't have, which is when the extreme weather conditions come, instead of trying to have a last-minute, open a church up type of situation, which isn't even Instead of trying to have a last minute, open a church up type of situation, which isn't even consistent, this can serve as that type of situation. Next slide. So in that scenario, during the daytime, there would be the tables out. It would serve as a soup kitchen. And in the extreme cold weather, they could bring cots out. It doesn't stay that way during the day. And um the individuals would be safe from those weather conditions. Next slide. The estimate is about a hun- one point five to two million. It does include showers, which has been another need, especially if individuals are trying to attain and keep um employment. Being clean is important. And it will also allow La Puente to provide more outreach and oversight at Saint Benedict's with this location, which is something that the neighboring properties have asked for. So we currently are applying for grants in design. The next one. The other project we are working on on this same property is what we are calling targeted affordable housing. So the priority would be for those exiting homelessness and or um that might have a criminal justice background. So right now, the housing crisis has it to where we give the story of, of our development services director trying to find a rental for her sister being willing to sign. She has no criminal background, solid employment, good credit, all of those types of things, and still could not find rental for her family. So for someone who doesn't have a solid credit history, has a criminal history, may not have, um they're coming out of homelessness, so they may have been evicted, or they may have a, a checkered past. They, they stand no chance right now of finding housing. We've been successful in um increasing the HUD vouchers. There's not enough rentals that are taking the HUD voucher. So even when there's money that can go towards the private market, the, the supply's not there in order to meet the demand. So this would be targeted housing. There's nineteen units and then one unit for an onsite manager. It's mostly one, single bedroom um units. We wanted to build it from a trauma-informed area because some of the individuals exiting homelessness, when you see PTSD and some of those other things, being in multifamily with shared walls is sometimes a little bit more than, than what they're ready for. So these are standalone units and there are a few that are two bedroom for those that um might be a family. Um SLV Housing Coalition would be the one managing it. SLV Behavioral Health would be providing wraparound case management. And we did submit a grant for two point three million for the construction and case management. And I think that one is actually the last slide. Sorry.
All right. Great job, Ms. Brooks. I'll uh open it up for council comments on, on this presentation. Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So yes, we've been a part of this process. We know hopefully most of these things that were on here, but just thank you. And having it in one um one presentation and being able to share this with the community, I think is really, really important. So thank you for that work and thank you for the effort of all of the things. Um we, we collaborated with so many folks to make this work and continue to make it work and continue to find other barriers that then we have to work through. Um and I, I really just appreciate that. And when we talk about many of those lists, just, you know, to kind of go back May is Mental Health Awareness Month, right? When we look at the things on the list that contribute to homelessness, part of the work we need to do is also supporting our community in different ways, in addition to housing, to make sure people get the supports and services they need. And housing is one of those ways to help people's mental health, in addition to help them contribute differently and with purpose than they've been able to.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Crips?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um I, I think I've seen this presentation a couple of times and I'm not done seeing it. So um but I appreciate that it was presented to council in such a way that now it's out there on the website and the public can go in and click on it and see it for themselves and, and help educate themselves and others. Um and I'm just gonna echo the sentiment. I'm so glad the gentleman from Denver are here just so that you can see the work that we get into trying to make affordable housing a reality here in this part of Colorado. And if anything, please, please take our ideas and take them back up to Denver and just spread the seeds. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crips. Uh Counselor Hensley?
I would just echo what uh the other counselors have said. I think what's really great about this is um this is not an easy process that we've gone through and to really take the time and to share it in a way that's really easy to follow and understand, but how complicated it has been. And um that one thing leads to another, leads to another. And it's going to be an honestly, a consistent circle that keeps growing and things that we're gonna have to keep adjusting and doing. Um but to get that out there so people know. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Okay, I'll just close it out. Uh Ms. Brooks, once again, this was a very good presentation. I had an opportunity to sit through the first time you gave it at the chamber. I really uh resonated with a lot of people, uh seeing the commitment and also the courage that it takes for a city like this to uh move forward in this direction, to address the homelessness uh in our community as a, as a team as well. So thank you for doing that. Thank your staff. And um we just have to continue to keep the word out there and let them know about our narrative and what we are doing uh to soothe some of the naysayers out there. They'll see it. We just keep doing it. Thank you. Okay. All right, council. That brings us to the uh next item on the agenda, committee reports. You have any committee reports tonight? No committee reports, okay? All right. Staff announcements, we've covered already. Um oh, there's one, sorry.
So um yes, we did have time in our work session, so I covered most of them. Council did want me though to in the public meeting, make sure to remind people of the warmer weather. Those maybe wanting to hold special events in the downtown, either on San Juan or a parking lot, that we did create a um policy for closing that in the central business district. And one of the key parts is that entity must either be sponsored by the city, the county or chamber, or by a business in the central business district. And we wanted to make sure that there needs to be a connection to the central business district for the event, as well as serving food is limited to the same standards as food trucks, which is they can't do food service within two hundred feet of a brick and mortar building.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. That brings us down to um council comments. Any council comments before we go into executive session? Okay, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Hensley, and then Counselor Crips?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um I just wanted to let council know that I will be on vacation during the next meeting, so I will not be in attendance. Um and then really just, I've appreciated the partnerships happening in our community around mental health services and things like that and coming together tonight. So I just wanted to say thank you again to council for proclaiming that every single year. I think I've been a part of those proclamations for about ten years now. I'm still really appreciative of that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Hensley and then Counselor Crips?
So two things, um I just want to send my regards and condolences for the alligator farm, for Jay Young's um family, all of that. That was obviously very devastating. Um I know that with community support and things, they will rebuild, but it still was such a major loss. So just wanted to share that. And then on a brighter note is what a phenomenal dinner last night um for all of our volunteers that help out. It is truly what makes our city so special is everybody that helps in their own way, does what they can do. Um and all of that brings us together and really makes us very strong. And it was great to have such a good turnout. So thanks for that.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Crips?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I echo Counselor Hensley's comments about last night's dinner. It was amazing to see a large room full of volunteers. So that was very refreshing um after COVID to, to get out and to see all that again. Um I just have a quick announcement. The literary magazine reception for the message from Hidden Lakes, we have it every year. It will be held this Friday here in these chambers at six PM. And the authors are community members that have submitted um works for this literary magazine. They'll be on hand to um receive any potential awards, but also to read from the magazine um their stories and their poems and things of that nature. So if you're not doing anything this Friday, I urge you to come on out and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crips. Uh Counselor Carson?
I, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to staff. Thank you for the work you guys put in. It's, it's tough. All, all across the city, we have a great staff. You know, our PD is awesome. Our Public Works is awesome. You guys are kicking butt on all the projects. Um our city manager is awesome. Thank you for the presentation, the presentation. Uh we have a great staff and, and we appreciate that as a council. I, I, you know, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I'm sure everybody all it does, you know, we show that a lot. But I do want to extend a, a special thanks today to, to Ty. We have a really good mayor. Uh sometimes I think he's cloned because he's in three places at the same time. But you know, I just want to thank you for representing well. Uh we went to the Easter egg hunt on Saturday and that was really great. Couple thousand people there. Um you know, he just always represents us well, always articulate, always gives a great message. You know, we just had the, the guy from La Puente tonight thanking you for being there auctioneer. Um that stuff's tough to be at. You know, I, I just really want to give you, you know, props for being able to be there and make it to all these things and represent the way you do. You do a really great job and I just wanted to point that out. I don't know if you, I don't think we talk about it enough, but yeah, there's some days I think he's cloned because I see him like in three different places, you know. Um thank you, Ty. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Carson. That uh touched my heart. I appreciate that, my friend. Thank you. Um any other comments? Oh, if not, I'll wrap things up. Thank you again, Counselor Carson. As he mentioned, we were at the Easter egg hut uh hunt and um it's so good to see. The other day I was just so excited when I saw all of the council members at the board appreciation dinner. It just shows a lot when we show up to these events and let the community knows that we really care about what's going on. So thank you, uh council. Thank you staff for showing up there too and all of the hard work and dedication and time it took to put that event on. Also, I want to send my prayers out to the young family as well with the alligator farm and hopefully um as a community, we'll be able to come together in some form or fashion to, to help them at some point in time to restore and get back whole again. Um that's all I have and uh we'll go ahead and officially adjourn this meeting. Oh, executive session is next, but we'll go ahead and let Counselor V Hill go into uh, put us into an executive session. And once again, thank you, Counselor Carson.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant, pursue it to CRS twenty four six dash four oh two four B and four E.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll go into executive session and no further business will be discussed uh after we end that.